I would like to report out that the board did meet in closed session, and the board took action to approve a settlement agreement to resolve a dispute concerning a special education matter, and the vote was unanimous. I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Sierra Sands Unified School District Board of Education, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Zade, our student board member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Item number one, adoption of the agenda. Any changes?
No changes.
Then we'll move on into reports and communications. Item one, student member report. Zade? Pardon? Oh, I just looked right at it, didn't I? I'm sorry, Zade. We're going to jump in here, go back to item two, approval of minutes of the regular meeting. If there are no changes, they will stand as presented. Any changes? Okay, now it's your turn, Zade. Thank you.
From Murray Middle School. There was a wonderful opportunity for everyone to witness a spectacular partial solar eclipse last Saturday from 8:07 until 10:50 p.m. Around here, the sun was blocked into just a crescent shape at 9:24 a.m. Ms. Bruschow loaned out eclipse classes to her students who were interested but ran out. As other students from Round School started asking for them, she found out that several stores were selling them around town. With our counseling department, we collaborated with ASB to come up with the door decorating competition, which is happening during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st. Advisory classes will be competing on a red ribbon slash Halloween theme. The winning door will get a pizza party. There will also be a red ribbon themed spirit week, October 23rd through the 27th, where students will get prizes for participating. J.C. Lucerno and Mrs. Johnson will be going into classrooms next week for a monthly counseling lesson, which will focus on bully prevention, cyber bullying, and digital citizenship. We are working with the PE department to put on an anti-bullying walkathon the week of the 23rd through the 27th. Students will be walking the track and competing with the students and their teachers' other class periods. A pizza party will be awarded to the winning period with each teacher. We are very excited for these fun events and hope to inspire the kids to stand up to bullies and say no to drugs. Our end of the month for October culminates with Coffee with the Principal on October 25th, Lights On with Leaping Lizards on the 26th of October, and our Autumn Dance on the 27th of October from ASB. We have great parents support and look forward to the awareness this past month for our canned food drive, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Red Ribbon Week. From Monroe Middle School. The first quarter of this school year is in the books, and the Monroe Tigers are ready to show continued success in the second quarter. We celebrated first quarter last Friday with grade-level assemblies in the gym. Our James Monroe Cheer Squad performed and then stayed to cheer on all the award winners. It was awesome to recognize students for their character, strong academic showing, hard work, and determination. A new tradition was started by our kindness club and carried over throughout campus, where students selected each other and teachers for special awards like being an upstander or awesomely authentic, and for teachers being a stupendous supporter or an exemplary explainer. We are looking forward to recognizing students again at the end of the semester and including attendance goals and honor roll at that time. Advisory interventions are in full swing and going well. We especially see the impact on our eighth-grade English scores on their IABs as they are working toward 90% meeting or exceeding standards. The fall concerts were fantastic. It's always wonderful to hear the progress musicians make each year. Next week kicks off Red Ribbon Week, and then the holidays will be upon us. From Mesquite. Mesquite had five graduates this first quarter, with a few more on the way. Each graduate had an opportunity to take pictures with their gown and then walk to the school in a mini-graduation ceremony. The student body surrounds the grass walkway to applaud the individual's achievement. Celebrations abound in our award assembly, where students were recognized for 30 more and out the door, best attendance, and other academic and credit achievements. Today, students who had the highest credits earned or who are closest to graduation got to attend the Tunnels to Towers 9/11 exhibit. Next week, all Mesquite students will participate in a presentation from our Saracose Community College staff during a school-wide assembly. Saracose experts will share valuable financial planning and FAFSA information to help students be successful post-graduation. Next week, several students will go to the Mojave Air and Spaceport for the Career Expo, and seniors will get to participate in the College and Career Fair at Saracose. Thanks to the great work of the Mesquite staff through techniques like classroom contracts and the positive engagement from students, credits are up and suspensions are down. Go Dragons, show 'em how to soar. And from Burrows. October has been an incredibly exciting but busy month for the Burrows. The first quarter ended, and we started off the second quarter with homecoming activities with Bee Mountain Painting at the end of September and dodgeball on October 5th. Last week, we held our annual Amazing Race event on Tuesday, the 10th, where 19 teams of students power walked around campus and played fun games hosted by clubs and organizations. Then we held Powderpuff on the 11th. The winner of Powderpuff this year was the seniors. Juniors won the hit drill competition, and seniors won the cheer competition. On Thursday, the 12th, we put together the floats for the homecoming game. Each class represented a specific decade. The freshmen were the 60s, the sophomores were the 50s, the juniors were the 80s, and the seniors were the 70s. The class that prevailed over all the others was the juniors. On Friday, the 13th, we had our huge homecoming rally hosted by our cheer teams. Overall, the rally rants smoothly and everyone had fun. Our winners of the rally were the sophomores. That night, we crowned this year's homecoming queen, Mika Hildreth. The other finalists were Brianna Tejada and Mindy Bravo. Then our big homecoming game against Desperia kicked off. The Burrows put up a good fight against the Scorpions and played well. On Saturday evening, students dressed up and danced the night away at our themed homecoming dance. This year, our theme was Dancing Through the Decades. Coming up for the Burrows is Red Ribbon Week next week and Costume Day, where students will dress up for Halloween. In sports, Zion Ortiz won the cross-country race at the Clovis Invitational and set a new school record. The girls' team also set a record on the course. Girls' tennis held a home match earlier this week on Tuesday. They've been playing incredibly well. Volleyball finished in second place and is ranked seventh in the division. They are currently playing in the first round of CIF playoffs tonight against Palm Springs. The fall play will be held at 7:00 p.m. in the pack on October 27th and 28th, and November 3rd and 4th. The AV Club produced the first edition of the school newscast and released it on YouTube, and the Blockbuster newspaper released their homecoming issue on the 13th, and I have a copy of that here. That's just an example, but...
Thank you, Zade, so much. That brings us to item two, report from members of the board. Anyone have anything they'd like to report? If not, I just wanted to comment that I did have the opportunity the last couple of weeks to attend with Dr. Moore some visitations to several of the campuses. We visited Burrows, Fowler, Las Flores, Inukirn, Monroe, and Mesquite, and it is always exciting, impressive, and inspiring to see what is going on in our campuses, what our staff and all our personnel and students are doing, and what we are doing to provide educational opportunities for our kids and meet their needs. Every day, I think, more and more is required and requested of schools to meet the needs of kids, and our folks are working hard to do that, and it's obvious by the work you see. So with that, I will go to the superintendent's report, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, and I did want to acknowledge that we do have Mr. Rockwell joining virtually, so he is connected via WebEx as well this evening.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you.
Did you want to say anything under board report? I'm sorry.
No, I did not want to say anything. Thank you.
Good, we'll mark that down.
I knew you would.
All right. Many of the things I wanted to highlight, Brody and Mr. Ferris already shared, so I'll just add to that. Our Month One enrollment has been complete, and we're at 5,082 students, which is down 12 from this time last year. And interestingly, the reason why we're as close to last year as we are is because of the growth we've been experiencing in TK. So we've grown 21 students in our transitional kindergarten, so you can see where we would be down over 30 without that. So that's kind of helping to stabilize us, and that's a trend that we're seeing statewide is because of that growth, it's helping us not decline as much as we might have been seeing. And although we're down slightly, our attendance is up from last year, so we're really excited about that. Our average attendance is 95%. This time last year is 92.9, so we're up a little over 2% and excited to see, and that's a team effort with our families, our staff, and students to ensure everyone's showing up every day, ready to learn. We are celebrating a large number of things. I'm just going to highlight a few that relate to our staff. So this is School Bus Safety Month in October. We had National Custodian Day on the second, National School Lunch Week last week, and Week of the School Administrator, and we just want to continue celebrating the great folks we have on staff that show up every day and make a difference for our students. And I do encourage you to check out the pictures on our social media from the school lunch week. They went all out. They had some from-scratch meals and all sorts of fun things going on last week in honor of National School Lunch Week. And then next week, we already talked about Red Ribbon Week, and then it's also Kern County Math Week, and so our schools will be sending out fun math games and activities to share with families, along with Red Ribbon Week information throughout next week. And we talked about the great classroom visits. I would also like to thank the Indian Wells Valley Water District for their partnership in moving forward on our Richmond School project. There were some planned discrepancies that were causing some problems, and they've worked with us to problem-solve and ensure our project is moving forward. So really appreciate that partnership that we have across the community. And as Brody mentioned, we had the Tunnels to Towers exhibit preview today with our students from Mesquite and Burrows, and it was an incredible learning experience. And when you think about all of the students in our system today, none of them were born on 9/11/2001, and so what a great learning experience for them to get a piece of our American history and understand some of the significance there. And so that exhibit will continue to be available over the next three days at the fair, but we had a couple busloads of students get a preview there. And at the fair, just a side note, we will have a district table in Joshua Hall just to showcase some of the positions that are open and we're hiring for, and to have that connection point with the community in case they have questions. If we don't have the answers at that moment, we'll be taking down names and contact information so that we can get back to them. So just looking forward to that opportunity this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. That brings us to reports to the board trustees by the Desert Area Teachers Association. Ms. Poole.
Good evening. Paris, last month I called you Dr. Ferris, and we had a good laugh on campus with some people you know. So I almost said welcome. I'm so accustomed to being in my classroom, "Welcome."
Thank you.
Superintendent Moore, board members, and everyone else. I just want to start by saying that this is a little bit of shameless self-promotion and a little bit of an explanation. The fall play goes up next Friday, and rehearsal ended at 6:30, so I'm a little not really focused, but I want to say it's one week from tomorrow, which seems really, really soon. However, I do want to say the kids are really doing great. They've really grown a lot since we started, and I feel like it's going to be good, but don't tell them I said that, because I really had to lay into them today about how important it is to work really hard. So this is just between us that they're really doing great, so if you get a chance, come out and see the play.
And what time is that?
Well, I happen to know. It's next weekend and the weekend after, at 7 o'clock. You can buy the tickets, $10, buy them at school or wherever, at Red Rock. I should have set up in there as well. But you can buy them right at the window, and it's the same price. Okay. Back to data. I spoke with Dr. Moore earlier this week, which is always nice to have that meeting with the superintendent. And really, it's always, I really appreciate that we have these meetings every month. And really, the big thing that I was mentioning to her, and we talked about it quite a bit, and I feel we really listen to each other, is that there's an awful lot, and you mentioned this, Dr., you mentioned this, Mr. Ferris, there's a lot being put on teachers, right? There's a lot going on in a classroom, and there's a lot being put on the teachers. And kids have gone through a lot, families have gone through a lot in these last few years, and we have a lot of, you know, big behaviors in the classroom, and which we know as teachers going in, we're going to have this, right? And by and large, we enjoy the kids. I mean, truly, it's a delight to work with the kids, but we have some kids who are really struggling, you know, in many ways. And we're there every day, and unless you're there every day with all the responsibilities of being a teacher and, you know, talking to the kids and caring about the kids, and oh, also, by the way, making sure they're learning, right? You can't really have a full appreciation of that, and it takes a toll when you have somebody, you know, calling you names or telling you you're stupid, no matter what their age is and no matter why they're saying it. And sometimes kids are saying this because they're acting out, right? And we all have hearts, and we all appreciate that, but we also have feelings. And I think, I just want to make sure that as we just keep going on in our school year that we recognize that for some teachers, it's really difficult, right? They have really challenging classes, and that's every day they're in there. And we ask a lot of our teachers, and I just want to make sure that we listen to teachers as we move forward and make plans, because I think that's important. And we're here and we stay because we enjoy it, but it is challenging work, and I just want to make sure that that's recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the report to the board of trustees by the California School Employees Association.
Hello, School Board President, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Moore, Staff and Community. This past Monday, I held our monthly chapter meeting, and during this meeting, we discussed various topics that have our classified staff not very happy. One of our biggest topics for discussion was the fact that we are contracting out for various positions here in the district. It has been said that all field trips must be contracted out, per Dr. Moore. Now, we understand that we are short bus drivers, and doing any kind of field trips would take away drivers from our normal routes. However, we are able to use our drivers for local trips such as Lake Isabella or Tehachapi. If we didn't, the groups needing that bus would not be able to afford the field trip. Also, these contractors are driving here in their vans, using our good buses and not having to gas them up when they are done or clean them, just remove the trash, which is putting more work onto our bus drivers. There have been several last-minute cancellations, which still leaves us scrambling to cover that trip. It is also taking away money from our bus drivers, who in the past would receive overtime, so being unable to get these field trips has cut their pay. Why are we continuing to spend so much money on outsourcing versus paying more to your classified staff? Another big topic of our meeting was added work to our child nutrition staff, having to prepare stacks for the after-school programs. Also, they've been asked to work over the extended Christmas break with an added $5 incentive. It was asked, how and why can the district continue to offer this $5 incentive to get staff to work on their breaks? But we have to fight so hard to get any money added to our pay scale. The district needs to invest in their staff, or we'll continue to have high turnover rates. I do have to say that the district has worked with us over the last two years, and we have seen some money go onto our pay scale. However, before that, we had not seen any money in four years added to our pay scale except for the minimum wage increases, which led to the collapsing of our pay scale. In January, the state minimum wage increases to $16, and in April, the fast-food wages goes to 20. How are we going to incentivize our current employees to stay working for the district and not leave to work in fast food? But also, how will we entice new employees to come work here? We hope to continue to work together with the district to continue to improve our pay scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next brings us to communications from the public. The board will provide time during the discussion of each agenda item for members of the public to comment. At this time, members of the public may address the board on items that are not on the agenda. The comments should relate to items of public interest within the board's jurisdiction. The law prohibits the board from taking action on items that are not on the agenda, but if appropriate, your comments will be referred to staff for response. When addressing the board, please state your name at the podium and limit your remarks to three minutes. In accordance with the board bylaws, the board will limit the total time for public comment to 30 minutes. Those wishing to address the board beyond that 30-minute time limit may do so at the end of the scheduled meeting agenda. I now open up public comment.
My name is Kathy McCoy. I am a teacher at Pierce. I am the data vice president. I wanted to speak tonight to the continuing issue of Spectrum on the Pierce campus. So Spectrum, we contracted with them. Their job was to prepare students to return to SDC and then mainstream. That program right now is failing. They are not able to keep the students in the room. Originally, it was to be gated off so that there was some containment. We now have students walking around campus on their phones, followed around by pairs, because the pairs don't have anything that they can do once those students are out of the room. One of them has told the teacher to get out of their room. We have students who have been standing at lunchtime near the Pierce students, standing on tables, jumping on them, interacting with the students. Pierce staff was reassured when Spectrum was placed at Pierce that these were not things that would be happening, that the people who would be working for Spectrum would have this training, they would know how to work with these students who need this extra care. They are not fully staffed throughout the day. They don't have a permanent supervisor currently. They're having trouble finding someone to be here, so they're on, I think, the third person at this point. The pairs are frustrated. They don't feel like they have the tools or training that they need to be able to do their jobs. And this is really something that has become of concern to the Pierce staff and community members and parents, because this is not the way this was supposed to go, and this is not working. So the district, I would appreciate personally, and I know that Pierce, hi Pierce, would also agree, would agree that we would like to have the district revisit that contract with Spectrum. At this point, they're not holding up their end of the bargain, and we're paying for something that we are not receiving. Thank you. I have a few minutes, so I would also like to point out that on Gold Canyon Road, down it is Navy Land, but on that road, we currently have only one way to exit, because during that big rainstorm, they had to pull up some of Gold Canyon going toward the back gate. We now have one way to get to our campus. If there was ever anything that happened, that would be a problem. On the other end of Gold Canyon, before you get to La Mirage Road, there for quite a while, the road was half-blocked off. They have sort of fixed it. The other side is now starting to flood. We're kind of thinking a sinkhole might happen. But currently, this is an issue for the safety of our students and transportation. And while I know that both of those sides of the road are not something that the city handles, I think should the district maybe make a point of we need to have safe access to our schools, and they need to be a place that parents can get to and that emergency services could get to, that possibly maybe something might happen. So we ask for your support in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Ferris and other board members. Superintendent Moore. My name is Beth McCain, and I am a 39-year veteran of the school district. I've talked with Mr. Campbell about this, but wanted to address the entire board with this issue. I'm just curious as to how it makes sense to take the school with the lowest test scores, that's working extremely hard to raise those test scores, increase attendance, resolve a plethora of behavior challenges from TK through 5, and that has special trainers brought in once a month, and make it the overflow school? Thank you.
Good evening, President Ferris, members of the board, Dr. Moore, colleagues, and community. My name is Vanessa Vaughn. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Las Flores Elementary School. I usually try to keep a fairly low profile, but I'm finding myself frequently frustrated this year. This being the day when public comment to the board was available, I decided to share my frustration today. We participated in the Great American Shakeout. It wasn't the shakeout that bothered me. It was that my students had to walk through a field of goat heads to get to and from our designated spot for the drill. Although I am talking about the youngest students at the school, this was the case across the campus. By the time my students got back to our classroom, our shoes were covered with goat heads. I have a couple of pictures. May I share them with you?
Sure.
The students in the picture are four to six years old, too young to efficiently remove so many sharp goat heads. Last drill, they removed the goat heads by pulling them out of their shoes with their hands, but we ended up with bloody fingers. And this time, I decided that we would do something different. So we went around to the playground, and we tried to scrape them off with the edge of the concrete slab. That didn't work. Fortunately, the sand trap in front of our door, that mat is great. So get more of those. The unfortunate side of that was that we ended up with goat heads all over the classroom, you know, right there in the doorway. And so we had to call the custodian, and she was pulled away from the cafeteria, and that just led to another problem and just a domino effect. This isn't a new problem, but the hurricane has made it worse than ever this year. It's not anyone's fault, but it is a problem that needs to be addressed, ideally before we have to go back to our designated safe spot again. I try to live by the motto, "Don't bring up a problem if I don't have a solution," but I don't really know anything about plants or weed removal, so I'm bringing it to you with the hope that collectively a solution can be found. I understand that the grounds crew has started to work on the area, so thank you to them. I also understand that a teacher at our site has offered to buy a machine that picks up goat heads efficiently. It is a large area that needs to be cleaned, but to me, it's an even larger problem that needs to be addressed. So I wanted to shine a light on it so it doesn't get forgotten or abandoned as new issues arise. I am asking that you monitor this issue and seek solutions immediately. Thanking you in advance.
Thank you. And Beth, I didn't thank you, but thank you also.
Good evening, Mr. Ferris and the board, and all the staff members that are here and the community. My name is Kate Anderson. I'm a TK teacher at Las Flores Elementary School, and as Ms. Vaughn has just explained, we have a bully at our school, and it's called Tribulus Terrestress. It is everywhere, and when it is green, it's very cute. It has little flowers, little yellow, or excuse me, little green leaves, little yellow flowers. It has about five different growth phases. I have been doing my research. I've been looking up, and my references, University of California Statewide Integrated Pest Management Program colon puncture vine. This is not just a little weed. It is everywhere. It's actually across the entire world. It's an invasive species. It showed up in California in 1902, and since then has taken over every place that we ignore. Railroad stations, you know, places that are derelict, deserts, all the places that are not being, that do not have cultivated plants. It's really nothing to, I believe, as Ms. Vaughn has explained, it's something that really can't be ignored. We spent an hour, an hour of our learning time trying to get goat heads out of, with kids crying. kids crying. Shoes are not, the shoes for young children are not constructed substantially enough to withstand the punctures. My shoes did not even withstand it, and I'm wearing boots. It is something that we deal with every time we go to our yard. Our kickball field is completely covered with puncture vine and can't even be used. So we would really appreciate, I have been talking with a group, stickyburroller.com. The woman to talk to is Elizabeth. This is a man who developed a machine, and it's very simple. Actually, another mechanical way of removing the burrs is to just take a big old carpet and drag it with a vehicle, but he has come up with a machine that catches the burrs. It comes off on a screen and goes down in a container. There is one that can be used that you can roll yourself. There's also multiple that can be pulled by a tractor or a, another kind of vehicle, like a lawnmower, a riding lawnmower. It's a two-step removal process. You can't just pull them out. You can't just kill them with an herbicide. You have to do it biologically, and then you have to do it mechanically, because the burrs will live for five to 10 years, some say even longer, to 20 years. So it is something, and if it's not dealt with before the flowering, we're lost for the season. It's going to be impossible to remove. But thank you, we appreciate your help.
Thank you. Have any other takers on the public comment? If not, we will move to personal administration, 8.1, report to the board, quarterly report Williams Uniform Complaints. Boy, I'm just all over the place, aren't I? Okay, we'll go back to 6.1, appointment of industry business members to career technical consultation advisory.
Are you trying to trick me?
Yes. You're saying, why am I here tonight? I just can't count.
Good evening, President Ferris, members of the board, superintendent Dr. Moore, staff and community. Education Code requires the board to appoint a career technical education consultation advisory to develop recommendations on the program and provide liaison between the district and potential employers. Activities of the advisory can include, but are not limited to, providing input on annual updates to the comprehensive needs assessment, ensuring programs of study are responsive to community employment needs, identifying and encouraging opportunities for work-based learning, ensuring funding is used in a coordinated manner with other local resources. The following business and community representatives have volunteered and are recommended for appointment to the advisory. We have Suzanne Amma, who is the department chair from Digital Media Arts and Information from Saracose; Matthew Wanta, department chair, Allied Health and Director of Nursing at Saracose; Don Ward, department chair, Paralegal and Business, Saracose; Nicole Harper, CTE Department Liaison, Saracose; Carl Etling, Boeing Field Rep for China Lake; Erica Beeler, something columns, NOCWD; Scott Hawkins, STEM Student Outreach at NOCWD; Angel Zamaron, STEM Outreach and Student Employment, NOCWD; Ray Hocker, Branch Head for Visual Projects, NOCWD; Mike Peterson, Senior Engineer, Parachute Branch, NOCWD; David Santiago, Business Services Specialist Employers Training Resource, America's Job Center; Scott O'Neil, Executive Director of the IWV Economic Development Corps; Sharon Boyer, Consuela Bain and Cynthia Swafford, all of JT4. Incidental costs for this advisory are considered reasonable, and we pay those through Perkins, and it's usually no more than $200 if that. It is recommended that the board appoint the individuals named to the Sierra Sands Advisory for 2324.
Move the recommended action?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Just wanted to comment that that's a pretty impressive list.
Yeah, I'm happy to see the increase in Saracose's participation, so we're excited.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? If not, we will call for a vote, and thanks to our member attending virtually, we will have to do a roll call vote. Thank you very much, Kurt.
You're very welcome.
So your vote, sir?
Aye.
Your vote was an aye, is that what you said?
It was an aye, yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mary Campbell?
Aye.
Robert Campbell?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is unanimous. Now it brings us to item 8.1, report to the board and the quarterly report of Williams Uniform Complaints.
President Ferris, members of the board, superintendent Dr. Moore, staff and community. 8.1 is the Williams Act Quarterly Report. The Williams Lawsuit Settlement Legislation requires the district designated to submit a quarterly report to the governing board and the county superintendent of schools summarizing the nature and resolution of complaints addressing insufficient textbooks and instructional materials, teacher vacancies and misassignments, emergencies or urgent facility issues. The report is attached. At this point, there have been no filings.
Thank you for that report. Brings us to item two, approval of resolution number 62324, number 072324, and number 82324, teachers teaching out of their major minor field or area.
Education Code Sections 44263, 44256, and 44258.2 require the board to adopt resolutions in order for the district to assign teachers in areas or subjects other than their credentialed field or area. Total of 15 teachers within the district have been assigned to teach in areas other than their credentialed field or area. They have, however, completed the required coursework to enable them to teach the designated subjects or grade levels in accordance with the Education Code. The resolutions 6, 7, and 8 are necessary to assign these teachers in areas or subjects other than their credentialed field or area. However, it is really important to note that these are all credentialed teachers. The resolution simply serves as vehicle to allow the district greater flexibility in teacher assignment while still being in compliance with the credentialing laws. The financial implications, there are none. It's recommended that the Board of Education adopt resolutions 6, 7, and 8 as presented.
Do I have a motion? Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion with board members? Any questions or discussion, members of the public? I will call for the vote. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is unanimous. Brings us to item three, ratification of successor agreement between the Desert Area Teachers Association and the Board of Education regarding settlement of contract negotiations for the 2324 through the 2526 school years. Mr. Ald.
The negotiations teams, teams for data in the district have reached an agreement on a successor contract for the 202324 school year through the 202526 school years. I should mention that it isn't as if we're not going to negotiate every year. The successor allows us to open all the articles. In between, you can only open certain articles, so we will start negotiating again in the spring for next year. So there were a total of 14 articles open for negotiations. A summary of new agreements and commitments is attached. The article with the greatest financial implication is Article 3, Salary. Data in the district will apply an 80% across-the-board raise on the salary schedule for the 202324 school year, retroactive to July 1, 2023. Also for the 2324 school year, a 2% off-schedule bonus for employees who complete the school year. Financial implications. Implementation of the agreement is supported by a three-year multi-year projection within the board-adopted 5% ending fund balance reserve requirement. The multi-year projection will be submitted to the Kern County Superintendent of Schools' Office for Approval. The district submitted the AB 1200 documentation to the Kern County Office of Education as required, and the county has affirmed that the contract agreement is fiscally appropriate. The AB 1200 documentation is attached as Exhibit B. It is recommended that the board ratify the successor agreement between the Desert Area Teachers Association and the Board of Education regarding settlement of contract negotiations for 2324 through 2523, 2526 school years.
Before I accept a motion, I would like to clarify, it sounded like you said 80%. That was, that was, that was an 8%. I think we had, we had strong support in most of the room, but that, that was not.
It was flim, I think. I don't know.
Well, I'll move.
In my head, I said 8.
I'll move to recommended action.
As a 8.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions or comments from the board? I would just comment that it's very good to be able to do this and move forward. I know it is example of a lot of hard work for a lot of people, a lot of dedication, so thank you, everyone that was involved in this process. Any questions or comments from members of the public or staff? If not, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is unanimous. Brings us to ratification of successor agreement between the Desert Area Guidance Association and the Board of Education regarding settlement of contract negotiations for the 23 through the 24 through the 2526 school years. Mr. Ald again.
The negotiation teams for Dega and the district have reached an agreement on a successor contract for the 202324 through the 2526 school year. The article with the greatest financial implication is Article 4, Salaries. Dega and the district will apply an 8% across-the-board raise on the salary schedule for the 2324 school year, retroactive to July 1, 2023. Also for the 2324 school year, a 2% off-schedule bonus for employees who complete the school year. The financial implications are the same, and it is recommended that the successor agreement between the Desert Area Guidance Association and the Board of Education regarding the settlement contract and negotiations from 2324 through 2526 school years.
Move to recommended action?
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions or comments from board members? Any questions or comments from members of the public? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is unanimous. That brings us to general administration, authorization of board member travel to the annual school trustees' fall dinner meeting of the Kern County School Boards Association. Dr. Moore.
There we go. I was trying to turn on my mic. 9.1, so we have a county meeting of school board members and superintendents on Monday as what, followed by the annual dinner, and four board members have indicated an interest in going, so this is the formality where we approve the expense in the nature. It's $255, well within the budget that we've allocated for this, and happy to answer any questions.
Move the recommended action?
Second.
So the recommended action is to authorize the travel. Any questions or comments from board members on this? Any questions or comments, members of the public? I have a call for the vote. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is unanimous. It brings us to item two, approval of the Board Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. So our Board Bylaw 9130 allows the board to have standing committees. We do not have any current standing committees, and the proposal would be that we convene a Board Policy Review Committee made up of two board members, so not a quorum, that would work with staff and see an early draft of any policies or administrative regulation reviews. These are typically required by statute, updates in legislation, and guidance from the California School Boards Association. However, sometimes there's discretionary policies or edits that can get a little bit more nuanced, and it's nice to be able to have a space to discuss and get direction from the board in case we want to go a different direction before we bring it forward to a meeting such as this regular board meeting. So it would not take the place of the formal approval with all board members involved, but would provide that space for a little bit more interaction and thinking through them before they're ready for primetime here. These meetings would be open meetings, subject to the Brown Act, they would be agendized. We do anticipate they would be during the workday. Staff would still do all the work on revising and making the recommendations, but again, it would provide that dialogue opportunity and guidance, and we know the role of the board is so important regards to policy and protocols, and we thought that might be a good opportunity. We get quarterly updates from CSBA with policies, and it's in the nature of 25 to 30 policies at a time, which can get a little bit big, and I know we've been trying to streamline the meetings and not overload it, so this is a chance that can help that as well. So even if we brought more here, we would have known they've gone through a very thorough vetting. Maybe the board members in that committee help us identify and code them in the meeting in such a way so that it's really clear. I've seen boards that do that. What are the significant changes, and what are really minor changes? Again, just to streamline our process here. So that is our recommendation for discussion and potential action this evening.
So let me clarify, the question is whether we want to create the committee. Would it also be appropriate at this point in time to, if we do determine to do that, to name the members?
Yes, that is the recommendation, to decide, to approve the committee and identify the two members so that we can.
So a two-step process, so if we can have a motion to approve the concept of the committee would be first, and then the second motion would be to determine who would serve. I have a motion for such?
Motion or consensus?
First, I need a motion to approve the concept of the committee.
Motion. Second.
Okay. So any comments on the formation of the committee?
I think it's a good idea.
Any others? I concur with Mary, I think it's a good process. Any questions or comments from members of the public on this item? Then I'll call for the vote. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So that is unanimous. Let's move to the second stage, which would be identifying the members of that committee. We've had some discussions in the past that I think might have a good influence on this particular discussion as well, and that is, currently, we have a good mix of new board members and members who have served extended periods of time. I think in this particular committee, it would be a healthy practice to make sure we have a mix on that committee of a newer board member and a seasoned board member. Is that something the board feels might be of value?
I would help with that.
Yeah. And do we have people who are specifically interested in serving on this committee?
I will help.
Okay. Mary is interested.
I have no problem. I would love to help you, but I know you only want one new member, so.
Well, that was my suggestion. The board may feel differently. That's a board decision.
I have no problem helping out.
Yeah, okay. Mike, you have any thoughts on that?
I think it would be nice to have one of each, but it depends on interest.
Sure, sure. Kurt, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I guess I'd agree that having a grizzled veteran and a new board member would be good. I guess I'd be curious, it sounds like both Robert and Mary are interested. Is it, you think it's a showstopper to have two folks a year in beyond this? I mean, I think it certainly would be better to have somebody a little more experienced on it as well, but.
The only good thing, no matter what, it's coming back to everybody, so it's not like, you know, this is a one and done. If we don't have somebody that's available to be on the initial, you know, they're going to be involved in it, so.
So maybe, so it looks to me like there is a significant interest in there being a blend, but let's talk about availability or interest. Mike, do you have interest or availability?
For the next four months, I'm not really going to be available until I finish.
So Mike, Mike, that was a long no on that. Kurt, Kurt, do you have?
Yeah, I'm in similar boat to Mike, especially if we're talking about workday commitment. I guess one thought I had is that, you know, if we had Robert and Mary kind of as the permanent members of that committee for now, it's a great opportunity to really get to know the policies better than maybe they would otherwise, so that may be good, and maybe what, maybe the way we could work it is if either one of them is not available for a given, you know, monthly meeting that they call on the other three of us to see if anybody can kind of fill in or. to see if anybody can kind of fill in or.
So let me run this by you as far as a process, maybe that might be of value to do it. Why, I would be willing and available to serve. So that gives three potentials. Why don't we just, at the will of the Board, if we just did a vote, and everyone vote for two? And then we could determine our two members, and the third vote person would be the alternate. Does that make sense?
Sounds great.
Does that make sense to you, Kurt?
Sure, sure. We could do that.
All right. Anybody else want to make any comments before we take a vote on that?
I do. My recommendation for the duration would typically be that we would revisit this at the December organization meeting. However, since it's coming up so quickly, my recommendation in this case is that the duration of this appointment would be through the following December, and that's when we would annually review the roles.
That makes sense to me. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, then I will call for the vote. Mr. Scott, your two.
I'll go with the Campbells.
Mary? It is okay to vote for yourself. That absolutely should be. If you want to serve, you should vote for yourself.
Either way, I mean, the alternate, okay.
You have to vote.
Myself and a veteran. Imagine. Mr. Ferris, yes.
Okay, Robert?
I'll vote for Mary and Mr. Ferris.
And who did I? Kurt?
Yeah, I'll vote for Mary and Mr. Ferris.
Okay, and myself, I would vote for Mary and myself. So it looks like we have Mary and myself serving on the committee, and then Robert as the alternate. Does that sound like our intent?
Yeah, it sounds fine to me.
I appreciate everybody's willingness. And I know sometimes, Mary, that's not real comfortable to do that right there out in front of God and everybody, but it's what you got to do. So thank you, everyone, for their time on that. That brings us to Item 3, Adoption of Resolution Number 102324, Month of the Military Family Appreciation. Dr. Moore.
Thank you. We have a wonderful opportunity to celebrate Military Family Appreciation Month, which is identified annually as the month of November. And then there's the Day of the Military Child later in April that we look forward to also bringing forward. So it makes sense. We're connected with the base. We have many military-impacted families and staff members, and we just wanted to take an opportunity to formalize our partnership and celebration with this aspect of our community. In addition, just as a highlight, we have a number of our schools that are currently applying for the Purple Star Distinction. It's an award that the State of California, the California Department of Education, awards to schools that have exemplary programs to support military-connected students and their families. And so we're very hopeful with those applications going forward, and this resolution will help those applications showing the solidarity and the support from the Board for the work that we do in our schools, supporting this part of our community. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do I have a recommendation?
Move the recommended action?
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Kurt?
Nope, no. Other than, I'm thrilled that we're supporting our military families. Great. Anything we can do to support them is okay with me.
All right. Any questions or comments from members of the public or staff? Call for the vote, then. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Myself, aye. That is unanimous. That brings us to Construction Administration. Item 1, Report to the Board, Construction Activities and Issues. Mr. Coit?
President Ferris, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Moore, staff and community, I'm pleased to give this update on the status of the district's construction activities. This report is presented for informational purposes only, and no action is required. So I'm just going to cover a little bit on Richmond School today, and we're making really good progress on Buildings A and B. So I think you can see, B is the L-shaped building, and A is the biggest other one left kind of meanders along there. So I'll run through some pictures of where we're at right now with progress. I'm standing in what will be the courtyard looking at Building B, and you can see that our colors have our stucco, and you can make out a little bit of the blue trim that's starting to take shape. I stepped a little further back, and you can see what looks like some boxes there. That's actually the air conditioning unit, so there's a close-up. Those are on, that was yesterday. Today, they're on the roof. So we are making progress. So all of the Building B HVAC units are up on the curbs now on the roof. Stepping inside of that same building, you can see the progress. And this is the building that had a lot of storm damage, too. So all the storm damage is repaired, and we've got the T-bar grid in. A lot of the wall finishes are starting to go on. There's one of our pony walls in there and some more drywall finishes. So again, Building B is starting to really take shape. Steel is going up in the air for Building A. So now we're turning around. We're looking at Building A, and you can see the footings. And I think today, there's twice the amount of structural steel up already. So I try to take these pictures as close as I can to upload them to the Board because it moves quickly. So within the month, we expect the slab to be finished up and really start to see some progress. They've already delivered the roof structures for the higher portions of Building A. So Building A, for those of you that remember the Murray Gym going together being panelized construction, it'll be that type of construction. So with all the modular portions kind of stacked around it. And I just had to throw this picture in there before we cleaned the sump out. When we had the flood, it left quite some interesting formations in the sump. So that's going to go away. So I just thought it might be a little entertaining to see the pyramids we built in there from the. So you can see that that was totally full during the flood. That's one of our four retention areas in that school site. And I just, any questions? If not, thank you for.
Any questions for Board members? Any questions from members of the public? Not, thank you so much. We move into Item 2, Approval of Agreement with Miyamoto International, Incorporated, for Structural Energy Services Related to Seismic Mitigation Funding for Pierce Elementary School.
So for this project, we've been working with Miyamoto for several years with different architects as a sub, and we felt comfortable doing some preliminary work with them, trying to see what schools might be eligible for seismic mitigation. And so we've started with Pierce, and obviously, we're trying to get matching funds for the other projects. So they gave us this proposal. The potential is to probably recognize about $4 million if all goes well with this project, and we get all our approvals, and then we'd get some, we'd get money-back seismic funding from OPSC. So the total cost for preparing the studies, program eligibility, the evaluation, and architectural services will be $75,400, and it is recommended that the Board approve the agreement with Miyamoto International, Inc., for Structural Engineering Services related to the seismic mitigation funding for Pierce Elementary School.
Move the recommended action?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Board members? Any questions? Yes, go ahead, Kurt.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for pointing out that it was a four-plus-million-dollar potential gain from the effort. I didn't see that clearly in the Board header, and I was thinking, oh, we're paying this money, and we're going to get fifty bucks back? Or, you know, four-plus-million is a little more compelling. So thanks for that information.
Any other questions or comments from members of the Board? Questions or comments from members of the public? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It is unanimous. Brings us to Item 3, Approval of Agreement with JD2 Incorporated, Structural Steel, and Donald M. Hoover Company, Flooring for the Richmond Elementary School Replacement Project. Mr. Coit?
So these are three contracts for Richmond School. Structural Steel, JD2 was the low bidder Flooring, all flooring with the exception of tile and the Resilient Athletic Flooring from Donald M. Hoover Company, $400,870. And Resilient Athletic Flooring, again, Donald M. Hoover, $61,035. And I might point out that all of these were under budget. I think that's a first to have all the bids come back on a package a little bit under budget. So we're happy to.
Let's do celebrate.
We're happy to see that.